Silent prayer for Bill Kennedy's family. You know, most of you know Bill passed away this morning after a short illness. And also prayers for Richie Burkett and his family. So bow your heads and have a moment of prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okie doke, let's call the meeting to order. And the first item as usual is the consent agenda, which is the minutes of our December 1st meeting. And if everybody's had a moment to look over those, I'll entertain a motion to approve. The motion by Commissioner Langston to approve the minutes of 12:01. They're second.
Second.
Second. Ms. Frankbrook, any discussion? All in favor, aye. At the same time, motion passed five of them. All right, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, Mayor, several things on the docket today. First thing I'd like to cover, I did have a chance to have a lengthy conversation with Mr. Hanlon at the supervisor of elections office. And here are just some things with regards to what you guys asked me to look into. Currently, it's by Florida statute, a 3% filing fee, a 1% election assessment. You guys don't have a party affiliation fee because this non-denomination, there's no partisan in the city elections. And so that's a 4% of yearly salary of $12,000. Currently would be a fee of $480. We did an ordinance that allowed qualifying for the commissioner and mayor commissioner seats by petition. By statute, the minimum amount of signatures needed would be 1% of the registered voters in the city. We have approximately 2,600 voters, so you'd only need 26 signatures on the petition. If you guys could vote via the ordinance to increase that percentage, as long as you don't go under the 1%, you can put it over the 1%. The problem that we have is, according to Mr. Hanlon, is for this particular coming up election, we're really running short already. Because in order to qualify petition, qualify via petition, you have to present the petition to the supervisor of elections office. This time around, it's, the statute states 28 days from the beginning of qualifying election. So it would be February 24. So we would have to, I mean, be really putting it up. We could get the ordinance passed, just how much time will we be leaving for the person or the candidate to get the required signatures necessary? It would also depend on how many signatures we require. But it'd be really putting it up really close. I had no idea that for a May election, you had to have that submitted by February 24. I had no idea it was that short of a timeframe coming up. It kind of caught me off guard. So we could do it, but it'd be really, really hard to get that through for this coming up election.
And then you're talking about the actual person running for office has to have all the signatures in by February 28?
24.
24.
Yeah. It'd be really tough. We have to do the ordinance, we have to advertise it, we have to do the first and second reading. And then we could probably get it done by about the beginning of February. However, that's going to leave them less, you guys, whoever's running, less than a month to get the required signatures. If we leave it at 1%, 26 signatures, I think you'd probably get with just your family. But, I mean, if we increased that to any amount, maybe like to say 10%, we need 260 signatures. 5%, we need 130. Wouldn't leave much time.
And I think personally, we need to require more than 1%.
I would definitely advise that. You probably have about 100 people running, all you need is 26 signatures.
Yeah.
And which he warned that, you know, the less restrictive you make it, the more people are going to be running, and you run the risk of doubling your cost of municipal elections. But that's up to you. That's basically, as far as the length of terms goes, increasing it from two years to four years, that's by referendum. It is in our charter that it's two-year terms for you guys. We can, he said there's plenty of time to do that. How the process for that is simply, we put together what the referendum language is going to be, you guys vote, put it on the ballot, get him that verbiage, and he puts it in there. The one thing that Mr. Commissioner Hoffman's raised on numerous occasions is, we don't want to do that if there's no contested election happening at that particular time. And that's what, sometimes we'll have to wait to see if anybody's qualified, and that puts the timeframe up. It's kind of difficult. But we could have it ready to go if we wanted to. We could do, put that on the ballot for May. And we have time, so you guys can think about it.
That was prayed in the Lord, what we prayed out to God.
Does anyone know what the county requires in signature percentage-wise?
I do not.
I'm not sure that they allow it, but I've been told that they allow petitions if they did.
Yeah, if maybe 1%, of course, it's based on salary. Salary's much lower than the constitutional office, but probably about 1%.
I think they would follow up the same statute. And so the minimum of 1% of registered voters in the county, as far as petition goes, I don't know whether they have that, or, I don't really know. But they would follow the same statute with regards to the model signature being needed. You'd have to have a minimum of 1%, which with the county, there's a lot more registered voters.
And of course, they have districts, so it would be 1% of the voters in their district.
I think it probably would be, bring it down to district, specific district.
Yeah.
I didn't specifically look into that, but I think the same statute applies.
Well, I still think we need to pursue it, but I don't believe it's going to be feasible to do it for this next cycle. We need to...
Mayor, would it be reasonable to just make it ordinance with an effective date?
Yes, I think so. Could we do that, Ken?
Sure. I mean, we could just do it now and be ready for the next, not this coming one, but the next.
Right, effective...
Second Tuesday in May.
22, yeah. On what I think.
I can put that together. Any other questions on the supervisor of elections?
I think that we need to get the city to, for the voters to decide if you want two or four-year terms, just have that ready. If you have an election, it will be that again.
That's totally doable. I put together the draft of the language for referendum, which would be very simple. It's increasing the terms to two years before. I don't think it's a very hard document to draft.
Well, Mayor, if we're going to be looking at making some changes to referendum, John Hanlon has expressed that now it is possible to run an election, a municipal election alongside a state and county election at his office, since they print ballots. And he's asked if we would be able to look at having our elections during everyone else's election time, do it during the general election season. So that's another way to get a lot of turnout to the polls. This is something else we can think about, if we're going to be adding stuff to the ballot. Let's add stuff to the ballot.
Yeah. Would that affect your workload, or?
I think we need to look at the charter.
I just looked at the chart a few minutes ago before I came in here. And it specifically states that our municipal election is supposed to be in May.
Yeah, it has to be put on the ballot.
And then you have the problem of, okay, so you're going to vote to lengthen the term of the current term to the next election. There's some things I would have to look into on that, just to make sure that we're across all the Ts and dot all the Is. Could be a little bit tricky in that regard.
Yeah, I think tricky part is looking at your legislation, as you said now, is that, okay, if we put that on the ballot, if it went into effect for this election type, how's that affect your current city?
Right, I mean, so you do an extra six months or...
You're doing an effective date two years down the road, so everyone...
Yeah, you'd have to, you'd have to put it out down the road.
Could you get all the specifics together for us, maybe? And if that's, if we all, we might kick it down or other, one more meeting and, you know, just outline the specifics that we would have to go through, jump through to make it work and coincide, and language for the referendum. Because you're going to have two referendums, one to the board, and the other one to change the date of...
Just to inform May in November.
Yeah.
Mayor, did we have a decision on the percentage of signatures? I know we talked about, we don't really like one, but where are we at in our heads? I was saying between 5 and 10 somewhere.
I'm the same note, you're at somewhere.
I mean, if it's less than 100, what's the point?
Yeah.
Well, as of right now, 5% would be 130 signatures.
Yeah, you get those at church on Sunday.
I'm open to a motion.
I want to shoot 10% out there, Mayor. I'll make a motion to do 10%.
That'd be 200 and what'd you say, 60?
There's 2,600, so 10%.
Okay, 260. All right, there's a motion to create ordinance to let folks running for city office to register by, qualify by petition. And effective date would be...
We're doing the whole thing. Pick any date post next election?
June 1, 2021.
Wait a minute, Mayor, you have runoffs. Just we could have a runoff, so we don't want to do July.
Would that be right, Ms. Pierce, July 1, or what?
Our elections are in May, if there's a runoff, it's usually in June. So are you looking at the, requiring the percentage for the election in '22?
'22 would be...
You want to just let Attorney get the dates together?
I think we need to take...
So we need to...
Well, my motion intent, Mayor, was just to give him a number to put in that.
Okay.
Mayor, can you just say August 1, you got it all covered?
Yes.
Okay. So there's a motion, there's a second. Second by Commissioner Langston. Everybody understand what we're doing anymore? Anything else? All in favor, aye? At the same time, motion passed five of them.
Now, I don't, length of terms was I compared to. You guys corrected, we'll all put that together and bring back before you the referendum.
Get it ready?
Yes, get it ready. Give us some what-ifs on the specifics of how we're going to craft it.
From two to four years and the changing of the election from May to November.
Yes.
Mayor, could we also have the attorney look into, as far as the validating signatures? We don't want someone just sitting in the back of their house right now, people's names that they know. Is there a validation process? Does the supervisor of elections do that? Does that fall on our staff, sort of responsibility?
It's the supervisor of elections.
So does that raise the cost of us having an election because of that service?
Probably will.
They have to pay to have it verified.
Does the campaign pay or is it...
The candidate pays.
Okay. He might be right back.
He might be right back.
He might be right back paying $500.
Yeah.
Well, we can chase our tail.
I think it's 10 cents per, it's so much per signature that they verify, but I believe it's 10 cents.
Okay.
I think.
So it's not $2.60.
That's another reason, if you don't have a higher number, so many people will, I mean, $2.60, you're going to run for an office, pays 1,200 a year.
Yeah, but they do have to do a little work to get that new signature. Okay, all right, we got that going, let's go to the next item.
All right, the next item is, it's on the agenda as parking ordinance update. I was on the new question, that I am basically trying to write a ordinance for the boat ramp with regards to if someone fails to pay the fee to do it, what the penalty would be. I put together just a quick, just a draft ordinance. The main thing is, what you guys would need to tell me is how much you want that penalty to be. I think I may need to add in a couple more things with regards to the enforcement of it. But as far as parking, golf cart, this, the main thing that I need from the board, basically, is a motion and a vote from you authorizing the staff and myself to set up an account with the clerk of court pursuant to Florida statutes, Chapter 28, Point 2402, whereby the clerk would then handle the enforcement mechanism of this. And then we, whatever ordinance down the line that you want to pass, whether it be for parking, anything else, we can enforce it through that account. What that basically is, is we issue a citation and submit it to the clerk. There's a $10 fee that we pay for each one of those citations that we submit to the clerk. And we can set up an account to build either annually or quarterly with the clerk. For every fine paid, so every time somebody issues a citation and they pay the fine, they, not only they get to retain the $10 fine fee, and they get 10% of whatever fine that we impose, if it's paid. For every, now, if someone requests a hearing, they want to fight the citation, they go in front of the county judge, and the nine, the non-pervailing parties, they lost, they had to pay the fine, must pay the clerk an additional $40. And they had to be assessed, it was basically $40 worth of cost. It's the non-pervailing party that's to pay. If we lost, we have to pay the $40. If they lose, they got to pay the $40 plus our initial $10 filing fee back. So there's a little bit of a risk, it's not really all that much. And I just think it's so much better, like our current golf course, I mean, excuse me, golf cart ordinance is set up to go through the special, the code enforcement, the special magistrate. And I don't think we've done one since that has been done. I just think it's, my recommendation is that we do this through the clerk of court. I mean, it's got more teeth, you're going in front of like a real judge, going to the courthouse if you want to fight it. I just think it's just much more formal and has a better chance of getting the fine paid than going through the code enforcement. Because in all essence, the only teeth that we got in the code enforcement thing is putting liens on people's property. If someone's from out of state or out of county, chances are...
You need a motion, first of all, from us to set up, set up an account with the clerk of the court to handle all our...
Enforcement of ordinances.
Okay.
City ordinances that we write as citation.
I gladly make that motion, Mayor.
Okay. Second, discussion.
By going through the clerk of the court, and like if someone contested it, having a hearing with the county judge, those things, to me, sound as criminal charge, not civil. So I want to make sure that we're going down that road of civil infractions, not a criminal violation.
You're not facing any type of jail or anything like that. What you're facing is a municipal fine. And it turns into a civil, actual judgment, if they don't pay it, it can be recorded and it can be, you know, they own property, it will be a lien, stuff like that. But it is civil, it's not a criminal.
And the county judge would hear the civil case for parking?
Correct. If someone was going to, just like he does now with the beach driving ordinance.
Yeah.
If someone wants to fight that, they thought they were wrongly given a citation, that's what you do, just like a traffic ticket, going in front of the county judge, makes the determination of whether you did it or not.
So if we have to find, let's say, 50 bucks, somebody out of town, I may not come back. So is it going to be on their record? Because I assume we've got a license number, so if they ever get stopped for speeding or something, they say, oh, you've got a fine in Port St. Joe, Florida, you have to pay now. What about that?
Well, I don't know the extent of out of state, and I'd have to check with the clerk to see exactly how he does that, and whether, you know, if you have something that's filed with the clerk of court and it's docketed for a case, there's going to be records.
You got any comments?
I don't know about other places.
I do, I do have some, the same exact question that you asked, a parking ticket. We may not have the driver's license because we, most of the time, it's just a car sitting there, especially at the boat ramp, where they could be out, gone for hours. And we're not going to sit there and wait for...
Just have the tag number on the...
Right, so we'll have the tag number, it'd be just like you getting one of those traffic tickets from South Florida through the mail, you know, from one of the cameras. Yeah, it may have been your car, but how do they prove that you were the one driving, even though you're responsible for it? But what happens when they say, I'm not going to pay this ticket? It's a city ordinance violation. I don't think that can go against their license. You know, most places have, you pull somebody over from Texas, they may have 10 warrants, and it's traffic warrants, that are not extraditable, and they don't even arrest for them. In Texas, they just say, you need to go down to the courthouse, take care of these traffic warrants. I just don't understand how that's going to work.
A lot of things are beyond our control.
That is, and hopefully it would be a deterrent and help increase our revenue of, you know, only getting 56% of people paying down there. So we got some posted.
It says a $200 fine.
$10 versus 100, or whatever we decide that's going to be, so.
Okay, so it also, Mayor, will allow us to put the signs up. Remember, we had to pull the signs down because we had to understand that the sign has no merit until we pass an ordinance establishing the fine, so.
All right, so the motion now is just to allow the account for the clerk's office. And any more discussion? All in favor, aye? At the same time, now, we need to, on this ordinance, if y'all, you guys want to look over, this is just a draft, or us, we just got it today. We can go ahead and pass it as it is, or take it home and look at it and come back next meeting. Just be up y'all. We can go, I'd like to go ahead and discuss maybe what the fine would be.
And I do have one additional question, and I think we talked all about this, but around it. If the person is fined for a parking violation, it goes to court because he doesn't pay. Is a local bench warrant issued to pick that person up next time he's in town to get him to pay?
It goes to, it goes to court if he, if he or she decides to fight it.
So for non-paying...
If you let 30 days go by or whatever, and you don't pay it, you don't contest it, the fine is valid. And then, you know, it turns into basically a civil judgment, and we go from there.
But when a civil judgment is issued by a judge to pay, doesn't it then become a crime to not do what the judge tells you to do?
I don't, I don't...
I think it does. It's just like, a long time ago, when fishing license, failure to carry a fishing license was non-criminal infraction. If the person never paid the fine that was imposed for not having the license, then it became criminal for not paying the fine, which was...
Yeah, it's not a crime unless you don't do what the judge tells you to do.
Exactly. I think, though, we're going to get all bogged down in the what-ifs, I'm comfortable with a fine, because in my mind, this whole process is really to just try and increase the people that pay at land and to park properly. And I think it will do that. I had one question for Attorney. Under number one, it says, any person failing to pay, blah, blah, blah. Should it not read, any person that is required to pay?
Yeah, that's a good...
Because we will have a large number of people that we do not require to pay.
Well, I say, is any person failing to pay the vote we want to be as set forth in the resolution before we don't do. And in that resolution, it says who has to pay what.
So that references back to the exemptions?
Back to the actual resolution where we decided...
Okay, down by with it.
All right, what about the fine? What did you guys like that say?
Personally, like, make it stiff enough to the point where they make damn sure they pay. You know, that's my...
That's how the county has been successful with the beach driving permit. You know, when they finally raised the penalty up to a few hundred dollars. Yeah, they, people understand it's better to go get that permit.
200? Too high, you think?
Man, I walked in here between 50 and 100, but hearing that, I'm thinking 100, 150.
I just, I mean, we've got a lot of people that aren't paying, we know that, so I'm just throwing it out.
Let's go. What do y'all think about starting off with 100 bucks and let's see what?
We can always go up.
Well, yeah, we can, it'd be easy to put a little piece of tape over that 100 and change it to 200 or whatever, but I'm, hey, I'm, whatever you guys really feel strongly about 200, I'm okay with 200.
Well, my thoughts, Mayor, were, we're not in this, I'm not doing this to make the city money. I'm doing this to enforce the rules. And you figure, if you only did 50, we're only keeping 40 of that. So if four more people get ticketed and don't pay, we just lost the profit for the first ticket. So at 100, 150, you know, that gives us nine people not paying their fines, and we're still break even. I just don't want to lose money on this all.
I agree. We've got the other fees attached to it, too, we'll see, need to think about. What is it, 10% you said?
It's a $10 filing fee.
10%.
And then, when they pay the fine, the clerk gets 10% of whatever that fine is.
We get 80 bucks out of 100.
And then we have to lose cases.
Well, then you got to pay 40.
No, we got to pay 40.
Pay 150.
That's fair.
Okay. All right. And we're going to go ahead with the ordinance as written and make the fine $150.
I'll tell you what, I'd like to, my recommendation would be, you guys give me the fine number, let me look at this a little bit more, make sure that there's not anything that I'm missing, and we come back on the next meeting and we finalize it and advertise moving forward. But I am, we will be moving forward with getting this account set up.
Okay, got that going. And you bring it back with all the Is, dotted, the Ts crossed, and the fine amount in there? Okay, everybody good with that? Okay, all righty, let's move on to MLK card or ordinance.
Yes, Mayor, what I need is a vote to have a second reading, and then you guys vote with Doc, if you so desire.
I'll make that motion for a second reading.
We talked about this before, can a motion be made for a second reading and adoption?
Yes, sir.
All in one, is that your motion, Commissioner Langston?
Sure.
Okay, all in one, second by Commissioner Langston. All in favor, aye? At the same time, most passed five of them.
Ordinance number 578, an ordinance permitting the land development regulations of the city of Port St. Joe, specifically city and its area text, a map amendment to, one, create a North Port St. Joe and its district, two, permit the zoning map of the city, provide for sustainability, including all ordinance and public therewith, and provide for effective use.
All right, ready to go?
Next item on the agenda, as everyone is aware, county has now purchased Lighthouse Utilities. We had an agreement with Lighthouse Utilities to all sewer customers out on the Cape. We read, they would like submit the information of how much water was used to us so that we could properly bill for the sewer. That was a resolution ways back, set up the agreement that was with Lighthouse Utilities. What we've done today is basically a new resolution authorizing the city manager and staff to enter into an agreement with the county to provide, basically along the same lines as what it was with Lighthouse Utilities before, which is $3 a month per customer. And we added a couple other things in there to grant us some more access, guarantee us more access to the meters. But that's basically what it is. So if you're so inclined, we just need a motion kind of to pass this resolution.
What's staff's recommendation on this one?
Do you agree forward with the resolution? It's the same call as was before, if it passes through to the actual citizens out of Cape Town.
Am I missing the dollar amount on here? I've read it several times. It just refers back to the agreement with Lighthouse Utilities. There's no specific charge, which I think should be in there.
There's a, if you look, there's a resolution, there's a resolution, and then there's the new agreement.
Oh, that's great.
That's the 28.
Yeah.
That's the twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
It's three dollars, man.
Yeah, I knew what it was, but I just, so.
We, we added a little bit of some other stuff in there as well.
Alright. Okie doke, uh, did you make the motion?
Yes, I do.
With staff's recommendation.
Okay, uh, there's a motion to, uh, to adopt a resolution twenty twenty dash oh nine, uh, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ashbrook, alright. Any further discussion? All in favor, I, I hold the same sign, most passed five and oh.
Resolution twenty twenty dash oh nine, a resolution of the city commission of Port St. Joe, Florida, approving an agreement with Gulf County, Florida, for certain services in connection with the operation of the Cape San Blas Sewer System. Approving a fee for such services, providing for such fees to be passed onto certain customers, providing for repeal of any resolution in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective. I believe that's all I have.
Alright, yeah, you've got a lot of work doing twenty-nine, the next meeting, so.
Way to go.
There you go. Okie doke, old business, Mr. Jim.
Yes, sir, still working on the resolution two thousand dash oh two for State of Mercy dealing with COVID, Mayor. I think many of us are relieved to see there's a vaccine that's being rolled out in the United States this past week. Uh, we're optimistic that it's gonna be very, very helpful to people in this country. But we're also alarmed by the numbers that are showing up in our area across the state of Florida, so we can't lay down our guard at this point until we know that everybody's set.
We, uh, do have some, uh, city employees out with, uh, COVID nineteen. I'd just like to remind folks, wear their mask, uh, let's, uh, we have a required city employees to wear a mask, we just want everybody to be responsible for each other. So if you're not six feet apart from your room, meeting room, uh, you need to wear your mask. So please, all department heads, uh, continue to encourage, uh, your mask wearing, uh, when you're, when you're indoors. Anybody else for that?
Mayor, do you know what happened and we walked and caused them to close schools two days early for Christmas break? Was it some event that passed the virus longer?
I don't know, I, I, I just know that they closed them because of the increase in folks being quarantined. Don't know what happened. Jim, next?
Yes, sir, next item, RFP two thousand twenty dash nineteen to Garrison Avenue patches. We had a brief discussion on our last meeting and tabled for further discussion. Looking through what we've done is, we have before you today, we do have a price to camera the system in there, roughly ten thousand dollars to go from Highway seventy-one up to Sixteenth Street. Also, Mr. Grantland has been in contact with the actual contractor. We'll let him tell you some of the details of some of the ideas they have, contact in just a moment. And also too, I gave you a map that we found that is in reference to the C D B G D R grant that we have submitted. It does include portion of Garrison Avenue up to Tenth Street in that grant funding request, but do I have any indications that it's gonna be approved? Well, we also need to consider that, so. With that, I'll look into it and tell you what he found out with the contractor, and then we'll look for discussions with y'all once today.
Mayor, I was hoping to have some numbers, I have some information on it today, uh, based on, we had a meeting last week and looked at the patches and discussed a couple of different options that were a little different than what we had did in RFP twenty nineteen. Unfortunately, I didn't receive that before, but I was hoping you'd, he just didn't say. What we had discussed last week was, currently there's twenty-one patches on Garrison Avenue. Ten of those are, I'm gonna call it original patches. Those are the point repairs we made before C W Roberts paved that first section from seventy-one to sixteen. Eleven new point repairs we have to make. Contractor felt comfortable in the ten existing or original patches that he could patch those, uh, without any issues of settlement, you know, or, uh, you know, patch failure. And what, I don't wanna say the verbal number because he, he gave me, you know, that last week, he hadn't seen it written yet, it was around a thousand dollars. So if that holds for fruition with what the written quote would be, that's significantly less than the two numbers we got from the bid. Uh, now, the eleven point repairs, what we discussed on, on tackling that would be for us to make those point repairs, him to come in and patch it. Knowing, uh, after a certain period, we would allow compaction to take place, whether that's three months or six months. We don't wanna stretch it out too far because we just constantly have to re-roll the millings back in the hole. But the longer you can let it compact, the better off it's gonna be at the end. And I think that was one of the issues with the original payment, we didn't get much time to compact, which is why he saw on the sub. So, his number was about the same on those, but he wanted to make sure that everyone knew that there's a good possibility that those eleven point repairs, if we patched them too soon, could have that same issue you're seeing now, you know, ten. Someone would have to come back and land it. You know, I wish I had this quote in front of me so you guys could see it, I don't, so I'm just kinda spitting this out from what our conversation was last year.
So what I've heard from you and Jim is, number one, we don't spend the money to camera the system at this time. We use city crew to make the point repairs. Compact the best we can, do your millings, let that stay for a while, and then, uh, Jason White's crew come back and pays over that.
Correct, you could release him now on the ten original patches, if the board wanted to do such. You could release him now, those, and he can come in and saw cut and kneel down and patch. And then the eleven point repairs we would do, you know, as we got to those, you know, based on the compaction time.
So there, so there are ten now that we could do without doing point repairs, but.
Those were the original patches I was referencing that we did prior to C W coming and painting that section of road.
Okay, alright.
Square in the road, it's over.
Okay, okay. Makes sense, if they save the money.
I'm all for it, we putting patches over correcting pipe, I'm not putting over rapid pipe anymore.
Right, exactly, and, and waiting on the grant from, from, uh, C D B G D R, that's a crap sheet.
We don't have six years. We don't have six more years.
No, that's fine.
Yeah.
So, so around a thousand bucks a patch right now from Jason White.
Was it brutal last week, correct? I wish I hadn't lied to anybody.
Right, right. Well, we can make a motion to, to, uh, to approve him on, on ten, uh, repairs, uh, for a thousand dollars or less. We can do that and get it going.
And I'll get that out as soon as I, it may be on the email now. I had several conversations with Jason's office manager this morning, and it just didn't get to the email.
Right, so if we do a thousand or less, he can go forward, if it's more than that, wait, wait the next meeting.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, to do the ten patches that have already been point prepared, not to exceed a thousand dollars a patch.
Okay, motion, second.
Second.
Second. Hoffman, second. Any further discussion, any questions, guys?
I, I just got one question, that he just, he's gonna saw him and just go ahead and pay.
He's gonna go down, he's gonna go down right and patch it, so it's a, you know, some of them are cheap patches.
And then, and, you know, good thing about that too, it will give us an idea how it's gonna look when we do the other eleven, uh, so.
And who we hire.
Yeah.
That's, his job looks good, I think it will entertain him to be involved the next round.
There you go. Alright, all in favor, I, I hold the same sign, most passed five and oh. Alright, the business.
Yes, sir, Mayor, the first item is New Year's Eve fireworks, everything is on set for twelve thirty-one, just like we did last year. The T D C actually pays for the fireworks, or reimburses the city for the fireworks, the ten to five thousand dollars. It's set to go off at ten o'clock from the Fred Paint, uh, but, everything is scheduled for that.
Okay.
Uh, the next item we have is N R C S grant amendment. Uh, remember, Pastor, we'd worked on this for a while and we felt that it was not enough money to cover all the cleaning that we needed to do within the D system for the city. If you turn over to page thirty-six, this actually gives you a break at on how much money we're talking about. Total estimated budget is four hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. This increases the amount of the actual construction cost, which is seventy-five percent of three forty-three eight one eight. Uh, but it also increases our max, we have, we're on the hook for twenty-five percent, which will be a hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and six dollars, to be included in the grant itself. But we feel that this should be sufficient enough for us to go out and bid, to work with the engineers, put the bids specs together, and just go out and bid for this project.
For the full amount?
Yes. We just need to, we need to agree on this agreement, get your authorization, get it signed, get it back up there so, uh, Mr. Baxter can work with us to fix some bits.
I'm glad everybody understands what it's all about. Everybody's, you know, probably helped our drainage and cleaned up after Hurricane Michael and so forth and so.
Free removal in the water canal, maybe, all the way from, uh, from Pat and Bayou down through Chicken House Branch, all the way down to Kevin's shop.
Right, that's, that's a lot of, even that. Yes, sir. Okay. Commissioner Lyre made the motion to approve the amendment. Uh, Commissioner Langston, second motion, any further discussion? All in favor, I, I hold the same sign, most passed five and oh.
Our last thing we have, Mayor, is a list of current projects we're working on and requests that we have provided to you where we're at with the city projects currently. Uh, a couple of those that we checked off this past week. Uh, Mr. Grantland's staff is in the last phase of the playground equipment, putting some moats around it behind the stack house, it's very good. And also our electricians have eliminated your city interest waste sign between the two, between the overpass and the bridge. That's two that we checked off this past week.
Alright, I like checking them off, it's a wonderful thing. Yes, sir.
Me and Jim had a conversation about, um, the tennis court in Washington High. We, uh, got some estimates of, um, uh, pole barn that we're gonna put back to, uh, put in that spot, and I think it's gonna be pretty nice, but we're trying to do is like something like, set together, we're gonna have a grill, and picnic tables and things of that nature where people wanna come in and have a family evening and have some place to go. You know, if they wanna have softball games or something like that, they can see the back barbecue. And it's, uh, a nice area, um, to, 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 to do that, so.
Right, I did.
Couple minutes staff for moving forward and start to work on that, so, uh, that's where we're at with that right now.
We think it's an excellent idea, Mayor, we started pre-planning on it. Mr. Grantland's crew was out there today to, uh, demo on the old, uh, tennis court. So at this point, what we need to do is we need to sit down with Mr. Langston and look at it, see how good the location he wants to do it. And then we can call around and get you some prices, and hopefully by the next meeting, we can have something for you to take a look at and see what's going forward.
That's really, that'd be a nice addition, uh, of course, you were talking to me earlier about it, and I think location is, is a prime thing we need to focus on, so you get to it by a vehicle or a truck to unload their grills or whatever they have to do, so. Might not be in the location where the tennis courts are now, but they're in plenty of other areas, so I kinda leave that up to you guys. You got any, any, uh, any other business, Jim, you and Brad?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm on up, this is John.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, just the only item of my agenda today was the RFP twenty twenty. That was the, uh, sun flex stations for a low pressure sewer. It's been several years since we completely did this out, uh, we've been working off a year, year, since Hurricane Michael. Everything is still in a wax, so we felt it's best to, to bid that, uh, formally, to, to make sure the plaxis were in chest and the bid in front of you actually was the only respondent, uh, based on our, uh, systems that we use, uh, we've used that same supplier now for ten years, so, you know, we're, we're very comfortable with it. We just had it for you, you know, you guys today to make the motion to approve.
Okay, I understand what Mr. Grantland needs and wants, if so, entertain a motion to approve. So, bid. Okay, most backed Commissioner Hoffman, they're second. Second by Commissioner Langston, the pump process bid amount of twenty-three eighty-nine, all in favor, I?
Aye.
Those same sign, most passes five and oh.
That's all I have on here, unless there's questions?
Anybody got a question?
I just wanted to say, uh, the canopy that you put out, um, at the cemetery, I had several compliments, and, um, it looks good. Looks good. And it turned out a little bit.
When you get a minute, will you check the bridge there at, uh, Sixteenth Street? Aluminum bridge that we put in? Uh, there's supposed to be some damage to it, I think somebody hit the side of it with a golf ball.
And why you don't have one about what's status or the other?
We're looking at probably mid to late January on delivery, uh, Jason White is gonna start the bridge at Butler's in the first of the year. So, uh, everything should fall in place, and having said that, we did have discussed internally with staff regarding the, uh, pedestrian bridge on Long Avenue. Next time anyone passes by there, pay attention to that winging wall that's holding back the earth. It's not doing very well. So, again, speaking with Josh and Jim, uh, and our Bundy staff, uh, you know, we've got some options coming up, once we get a contractor on the ground, to perhaps give us a price and come back and re-borrow the, you know, she pile, uh, to protect that. It's, it's unfortunate this collapsed, there's really not much we can do about it.
Alright, any other questions, Mr. John? Thank you, sir. Surface water, seeing as it's layered back there.
Mayor, uh, left the board have questions, I'm good.
Anybody? Alright. Kevin?
We're counting the same place for a couple, which is still working on the same thing, we'll be ready in January.
Okay, question, white water, anybody? Okay, thanks, sir. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. But just to let you know, we do have the bids out for the resurfacing of the tennis courts. Um, and we are still working with Duke Energy and some local contractors about lighting, uh, the, the courts at Lamar Basin. I hope to have some quotes here for you today, but unfortunately I didn't get them, so we should have that at the next meeting to have some more discussion about the lighting of Lamar Basin.
Great, that sounds good, and the, uh, the pay box for.
Yes, uh, that's kinda taking the backseat, I've kinda pushed that to the backseat, and I've worked on audit and, and other things, but I do have some information, I need to pull that together and we need to start the discussion about our options, um.
I think we'll have to go out and bid on it.
It's definitely, I've got two quotes that are about fifteen thousand dollars, uh, from two different vendors, so I need to put that together and bring that together.
If we, you know, we talked early, we wanted first of the year, we wanted to start rocking and rolling on the boat ramp and, and enforcement of it and use of it and all that.
I'll have that presentation ready for you for the next meeting.
Okay, if we know we gotta go out and bid, you wanna go ahead and authorize staff?
Well, I think the discussion we need to have is to make the final decision about the options. About solar and electric and placement of where it's gonna be, and the software options that we put in the bid. So we have some discussion about the variables that we're gonna bid, that we need to make some decisions about.
I mean, I was trying to speak across those. Yeah. Y'all gonna have to come up with that anyway.
Well, that's true. That's true, that's a good point, yeah, we could put a bid package together for you for the next meeting.
Okay, everybody good with that? I need a motion, somebody? Okay, Commissioner Lyre, and second by Commissioner Hoffman, to put a bid back together for our payment box at, uh, at the boat ramp.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor, I?
Aye.
Hold the same sign, most passed five and oh. Thank you, sir. Alright, I think this is probably gonna come under Jim and the rest of us, for that matter, a project manager, C R A director. Just put together, we thought Mr. Kennedy would be with us, but he's not, so we, uh, need to hear from Jim what kind of, uh, recommendation you have going forward at this time. If you don't, I mean, it's fine, it's that, have it today, so.
With heavy hearts, we, uh, we lost Mr. Kennedy today. Uh, we will be moving forward in the coming weeks, uh, we will give you some ideas at the next meeting, I have them for you in the next week or so, it's actually what we need to do as far as recommendations for the P S J R A and with the project manager.
Okay, alright, any questions, suggestions? Okay, let's move on. Okay, let's move on to Mr. Josh. City engineer, next door there.
All right. Uh, first two items on the list are the stormwater projects, uh, first one is Forest Park. I did meet with the Water Management District, um, Brett Cypress, the week before last, just to discuss potential of other projects and what we can do with this money. Um, his basic recommendation was for us to press follow-up, focusing on the stormwater master plan. And he did, they did not give an indication whether they would or wouldn't, but there has been talk from Karen that they may look, based on the projects they're identified through the stormwater master plan. They alluded to maybe being able to take that money and use it toward one of those projects. They did, he did not tell me indefinitely they would do that. The only thing that he, he did discourage was that, he said normally that that money is allocated for that particular project as far as trying to take that money and start an understudy in another part of the city. He discouraged against that, what his recommendation was, is press follow-up with the stormwater master plan. And then let's see what kind of money we have, what kind of projects we identify there. So my feeling is that they may be looking to take that money and allocate it towards a project identified with the stormwater master plan if we put the Forest Park project on hold.
That makes sense. Any direction from us?
As long as, as long as you guys understand where he's coming from, my direction I took from him is get the stormwater master plan done where they can review it, see what the projects are. And then it looks like that'll help us sort out what we can or can't do. But I did ask, you know, was there any room for additional funds? Because essentially, we've got about half the funds needed based on the cost estimates we saw. And he said, other than the additional funds, which takes from like six hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand, he said they didn't, they didn't see being able to get the one point four, one point five million, which is what was needed to do the cheapest option on Forest Park.
Uh, we don't have to go through them when we get, if we get this, uh, grant that we, uh, just amended the amount to clean out all these ditches and all that, or is that gonna affect us any way through them? Then they, I mean, there's that ditch and they wouldn't have to put a pipe or do anything else, but now we'll clean them out, so I'm.
Well, this, the NRC is, that's a totally different thing, and we're not, we're not digging those ditches out. We're cleaning those ditches out. So there's a difference. If we're not doing anything essentially to change the normal capacity of that ditch or anything else, they don't consider any of that. Um, Port City Trail, same update as the last time. I don't know if Commissioner Lowery has heard anything different.
I got a call from Danny, uh, I think it was Monday. Tried to call him back and the phone was busy. Got tied up with something else, but, um, I'll try to call him today. And then I'll reach out, back out to you. I think they're waiting on one, they might have it squared away.
It's one of these papers, the only, you know, and I'll talk with the guys over there again. I think the only concern at this point, the contractor hasn't reached out to me, like, hey, man, I got a performance payment bond that's two months old, if there's anything you can do to push it forward, because he's starting, I guess, a crew meeting on this performance payment bond, so we have to try to get them to get it back to him. Um, City BG Sewer, we are still waiting on estimates. Um, I think the last meeting I spoke about the gravity sewer on Long Porton was a six inch. And the contractor has pretty much told us that based on the shape of that, they don't want to line that because it decreases, or decreases the inside diameter of the pipe, which gives you no capacity to ever add on. So the two options are replacing the entire system with new gravity sewer, which we know will be highly expensive for a pipe person. So right now, they're gathering the quotes to actually do, to give us a quote on pipe first and to see what that option's gonna look like monetarily. And also within that, before the dip, the rest of the eight inch gravity sewer can be lined, there is so much sedimentation downstream of the scope of the project between where the project ended and the lift station. Additional cleaning is gonna have to be performed because there's so much sediment, it's actually backing, it's actually calling sewer to back up in the system. So, long story short, we're waiting to get those. I'm expecting to have those quotes tomorrow. When I do, I'll get with Jim and John, and we'll get the options presented.
All right.
Um, Long Avenue and First Street, we're working on a bid documentation for that, to be ready to get those projects out and bid. Garrison Avenue is complete, the Punch Cliff was finally completed this week, great favors and some odds and ends. So Jim has the last invoice, so we should be able to close that project out with the O P. Um, and then NRC, yes, I think we just spoke about it. We finally got that approved, so we'll be working on the bid document to get that out.
Right. Sounds good. I think everybody probably looks at City Fair every time they go down the parade street, and this moved along pretty good. Folks are really proud of that.
James Norman's been a real good worker with it.
Good, good deal. And he'd be a repeat customer, right, Scott?
Absolutely. Shout it out when he said, got to work. I'm, I'm in a hundred percent agreement there. Yeah.
Mike, any questions for Josh? Okay, thanks a lot, buddy. Appreciate your work. Code enforcement's next. Mr. Burke is here with us today. Any questions for him? Everybody see what's, uh, on the agenda and, um, talk about these, Rich?
Yes, sir, there's, uh, two we have on the agenda that's, uh, been through the whole process. The process starts out with being noticed that there's a violation. When they don't comply with it, there is a notice of hearing, it's in the paper, on Facebook, mailed out to them, posted here. So, and we've been all the way through that process now, so we're at the end of this.
During that process, is there correspondence from the people that are being served with the notification?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, and you're probably here because of my concerns and conversation with Jim. I just think it's important that when we're reaching this stage of putting liens on property or possibly demoing property, um, that we have some kind of assurance from our code enforcement, if for no other reason than to have it on the record that we are having this discussion. Uh, the last thing I wanna happen, see happen is that the city takes action against who we think is the homeowner to find out months later, no, no, that wasn't really the homeowner, it was sold and went this other direction. So, uh, I appreciate you being here and answering the questions that were on my mind, that we have indeed had some kind of correspondence with these people listed. And then they have to decide, do they clean up to come into compliance? Or do we continue to move forward and whatever our next step would be?
Okay.
Any questions for, Rich? We, if not, we've got to, um, have a motion to go out and bid to demo these two properties.
Do you want that individually, Mayor, or?
I think you can do one motion if you place pipe on with the property that you want to address.
Can you do one motion? Go move. Okay. Mr. Ashbrook made a motion to go out and bid to demo these two properties, uh, they're second. Second, by Commissioner Lowery, further discussion. And it's still, we're still, uh, uh, got money in our budget for the purpose of this. So we're still, um, inside our, our budget as well as it's making the city look a lot better.
I'd like to say so.
All right.
During the, uh, the, uh, time when people go for special matches, uh, then, then there, there are properties, um, probably about to get up to bid to demo. Can that person, um, tell that, um, the special master, they know that they're looking, give me another, um, few weeks where, um, I can look into, um, demolishing it, getting it demolished myself? Or, um, is it too late to, for them to do that?
Uh, I'll answer that question. Uh, we had one this past week, the last hearing that, uh, was that same scenario, and they asked for more time, and the special master actually gave them seventy-five days. So, yeah, we're, we'll work with anybody who helps us, so.
Okay, that, that's all I want, yeah. But that, that's good. That's good. Send our best interest towards the homeowner to think of an issue. We're, you know, we're probably at about, about fifteen fifty on.
Well, yeah.
We've had several that have complied, and they've given up on that and said, okay, look, I'll take care of the problem.
These folks didn't even talk to the hearing?
No.
They didn't even talk to the hearing.
And see, that's, that's, that's better for us. It's the owner, um, he takes it from out, and you go ahead and do what they have to do, you.
This is last resort for us then, you know?
Up there, right. So I think we have one that I'm looking into now, and we've already talked about, like, trying to force the lien. Hopefully someone will want to buy it. Mr. Davis, you got a question?
Someone asked me this morning about the property on the corner of Avenue Eight, they wanted to purchase it, and I didn't have any information to give them, because I told them that the property was gonna be demoed. And they said, can we buy it? And I told them I didn't have an answer for them, because it was just answered.
Get up with Mayor for meeting, and I'll give you some contact information on that.
I was saying, uh, Mr. Langston, that someone asked me this morning about buying that property on the corner of Avenue Eight, I didn't have any information to give them. All I could tell them that it was up for demo. And, uh, they said we would like to buy it, and it's long due, but, you know.
Yeah, 'cause see, we're actually gonna end up with, uh, probably thirty days before we get bid. So they've still got time to go through. I know the one on Avenue C is, uh, for sale now, they're trying to sell it before the, you know, we make the motion.
We got Henderson Avenue, we got let off the hook with the Robinson property.
That's correct.
They came in and bought it. We actually got some money out of all lien.
Right, right.
That's a great.
Yep, yep.
All right, anybody got any more questions, discussion, all in favor, aye? Those same sign, motion passed, five and over.
I got one more thing. Um, the trailer, the RV that go after the people behind that, that, that house.
Yes.
What, what have we done about that?
Made contact with them, and they disconnected the sewer from it. It wasn't hooked up utilities last time I checked.
Richard Lane, that's what we wanna talk to you about, about the next one on there, because we have multiple, uh, travel trailers that are in town that are, that are tying to our utilities, which is an illegal connection on there. It's not a, it's not allowable use in the city to have a travel trailer tied into the utilities. So in order to combat these type of issues, what we like is to walk from the board that, okay, if we find a travel trailer like one out of the bay that we see, that we can physically see is tied into the water or sewer, and we send them out a certified letter that says, hey, look, you've got fourteen days to disconnect from that, or we're gonna turn off your water and sewer for that property. We think that would give us some teeth, would be the next step. Because right now, with that one, all we can do at this point is send out a notice and call for a special hearing for the, for the special master to see. That could drag on for months, and then what are we really gonna do at the end of the day for a, a travel trailer to stay? So we think the, the best language we can have is these folks, because if they're, if they're living in it, they're gonna tie it into the water and sewer. So with the blessing of the board, what we'll do is we'll send them out a notice saying, you got fourteen days to estimate. We have nothing in the code that says that Mary can't store a travel trailer in, on her property, but she cannot inhabit that structure.
Well, it's, it's already, that, uh, I mean, the ordinance is already on the books, can't do it. So all I'm saying is you, you gotta do what you're supposed to do.
You're gonna get the calls just like we will when we shut the water and sewer off to it. But that's our recommendation, that's the next step, to get people to teach them that, hey, look, you cannot live in that travel trailer. We gave the city my. Mary was hooking these people's utilities up to these travel trailers, because is it not a felony to tamper with a utility, public utility?
I think probably.
You could push it at that point if you wanted to. That's, I mean, that's illegal.
Yeah, so I think this heavily worded, uh, certified letter, uh, hopefully get their attention. If not, I mean, you guys are already.
We shut off the water and sewer, we shut off the water and sewer to that whole property over there, and you can't use the, the house. I say we give them thirty days free utilities at the hammer and the film. Well, most of these, what you have is a lot of these, you're gonna say that you'll have a valid account. So they're paying for the service, but they're not supposed to have that, that being connected themselves. It's not supposed to be, it's not bound to connect.
So make it clear to everybody he's talking about.
Travel trailers. Right.
Travel trailers, but you're talking about turn off sewer and water for the property.
Property, yeah, that's all I'm gonna do.
So the, the home and the travel trailer.
So let's say if somebody's got Uncle, Uncle John that's living in the travel trailer in the backyard, it won't be serviced to the house or the travel trailer, which is gonna happen. So that's the kind of call you're gonna get.
What if Uncle John was only coming over for a long weekend? Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Uncle John's gonna leave all money. We're saying that they still couldn't be connected to the water and sewer.
There'll be a letter that goes out, and hopefully that'll follow within that fourteen days, and Uncle John will be called back to his permanent residence.
I, I got a prime example, and I know it's not legal, but my grandfather wasn't doing good. Where he passed, my aunt brought her travel trailer there for about six months in their yard, hooked up the utilities. It's not legal, but we'll get those calls.
Yeah, and I think that we should be prepared to have language that says, we'll disconnect the property, water and sewer, if you're in violation, but I think we should have the opportunity to accommodate someone with a special permit. That if they came down and said, hey, we've got somebody in the family that's sick, and we have a family member that's gonna stay for two weeks or three months, whatever. I, I just think we gotta have the opportunity to help people. At the same time, we don't want a bunch of trailers and mobile homes set up. I think we've actually had a few where the people were renting them out to construction workers. That's in a whole new category, but I like what Brett just explained. We need to be able to at least accommodate those for a short period of time.
That's why we're bringing it to you now, because the code says absolutely not. And then while, before we do this, we all need to be on the same page, because you're gonna get those phone calls.
Well, I think they're all sympathizing what, what you got them saying, but at the same time, you're opening up a quasi RV park in the city of Zingah, where these, these folks in Georgia running down here going fishing the weekends, and, uh, we, we have that now, and Rich and those guys fighting all the time. So, so number one, I need to enforce what's on the books. And if it's on the books, then you guys need to enforce it till we change it. I'm open to, I'm not, I'm not sure I'd be open to any special permit, but in that regard, because it just, uh, it, it opens up a huge, huge can of worms, so.
But I'm, I'm kinda the same way, because it does open up, uh, a can of worms, but, uh, and it's, what I want everybody to know, it's those are the calls we're gonna get.
Don't mind.
Well, the thing, thing about it too is, you know, you have these, these RVs and these, the camp sites, uh, probably up all around. And, um, the only place that basically that doesn't allow it is inside us, inside our city limits, you know? Once you open that door, I mean, it's gonna be hard to prove that I'm not sick of my, um, you know, or something like that. But that's, that's just my.
More enforcement on these guys and these guys, uh, how they're gonna enforce all that.
I got two calls yesterday, people that were looking at lots of the city limits, wanting to see if they were allowed there to have a.
Go ahead. Yep. Yep, and it's about running out of space. All right. Any, any other, uh, discussion or question of code enforcement? All right, let's move on to the chief.
We got two things, uh, one is request to put up the two thousand and ten Dodge Charger on the city surplus. It's charging remote.
Seen its better days.
Yes, sir, it's, uh, off the road, and we don't even wanna use it as a spare. It's, uh, probably costs us a lot of money in repairs and everything. It's, it's got a few little problems, but it still runs.
So there's some option to sell it, that's what you're planning to do?
So, there's some option to sell it, that's what you're planning to do?
Uh, I don't, I don't, I don't have any, if anybody has any ideas of what they're gonna do with that.
I'd like to approve the surplus and then, uh, I'd like to also get the board's approval to donate the vehicle to Department of, uh, DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, to their law enforcement division. There are three vehicles now. And, uh, the director of their law enforcement, uh, is a young lady from Animal City, Ms. McLaughlin.
Would you like us to strip it or just take the decals off and?
Whatever's easiest on the department.
I mean, the, the items that are in it are not reusable besides the two thousand ten Dodge Charger, so.
Well, I, I don't wanna put a burden on the city, uh, but I'm sure they have a tax that they can have, take out the, whatever radios and.
Yeah, I mean, we would get the radio out, but other than that, I mean, I'd rather just take the decals off.
Take the envelopes off and, uh, secure the vehicle and if the board agrees with, with my, uh, request, that, that's where I would suggest that we did.
Cause they're all.
That's all I ask.
Mr. Trump, have you had the contact with the contractor tomorrow about the?
Yeah, yeah, if, if we move forward and approve it, I, I'm sure they'll probably send an agent over to pick the car up pretty soon if we get the title on paper prepared.
Make that form a motion.
Absolutely.
All right. Motion is there second. I'll say, I'm saying, Commissioner Lyman, which is declare a, a police vehicle or surface property and donate it to, uh, DEP or use hopefully locally. Uh, motion is second. Further discussion, all in favor of I? I have the same sign, most passed five and oh. How you doing?
Uh, the last thing is, uh, last Wednesday, we got the, uh, stalker radar box, stealth box in, uh, and Thursday, we put it on a pole, just, this, I gave everybody a copy of the survey in some four-day period, uh, through yesterday morning and, uh, we're just kind of trying to learn what it can do and what we need to do different. But I figured I'd throw these, these stats out there for everybody to kind of look at what we were looking at on Garrison Avenue. It was placed down on a pole in front of eleven oh five Garrison Avenue, uh, until eleven oh five AM yesterday when we pulled it. Over that time period, there was eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-six cars that passed by that box, which is ridiculous. Uh, of those, about thirty-three percent of those are doing under the speed limit and sixty-six percent are doing over the speed limit, but the average speed on that road is, uh, about, uh, thirty-three miles an hour. And, uh, there is some high speeds, I gave you guys everything, uh, but, uh, I think we had some deflection or har- harmonic imbalance with the radar on that. Basically, how radar works is, uh, we're all taught the radars in our cars. We, we see the car, we determine that it's speeding, we're supposed to determine within two miles an hour of how fast that car is going. Then we use the radar to say, yeah, it's going that fast. You can't rely on the radar because radar is just a machine and you have a lot of errors on those radars. So, if we see a car and say, hey, that car's doing sixty and it pops up at seventy-five, you know the radar is wrong. And on this box, there's not that human there to say, there's an error here, we don't need to record this. And we're getting a lot of hundred and twenty mile an hour, uh, in the northbound lane from the stop sign at twenty mile, at, uh, at Twentieth Street to eleven oh five, which is point five five miles and it would almost take a top fuel drag to, to do that. I think, uh, I looked up this morning just to see, uh, a suit-up Mustang can do a hundred and thirty-six miles an hour in that street, so it would take a lot to do that fast. I just wanted to kind of just prove that that was a real, but, uh, most of them, the eighty, eighty-fifth percentile, it says it is, is doing between thirty-three and thirty-eight miles an hour on Garrison Avenue. Uh, it recorded about two hundred and fifty cars doing what I listed on, on the machine. You can list gross overage and I did it, uh, forty miles an hour was gross and fifteen percent are doing over forty miles an hour in a thirty mile an hour. I don't think the stats are real bad at all.
But is that also averaging the hundred and twenty?
It is, and so it's gonna be lower than that. If, if you look through the hourly things, I mean, on an hourly basis, and I went out there and said, two hours with a gun yesterday way back in Marlon Taylor's yard, so people didn't see me in an unmarked car for two hours and forty-four miles an hour was the top speed that I got. And, but it's listing hour by hour, sixty-one, eighty-five, fifty-six, eighty-one, sixty-seven, eighty-three, sixty, fifty-two, sixty-two, fifty-two, and it goes on and on up to ninety-five and hundred and twenty. So, I think I'm getting some reflation off the wheels. It's called cosine angle, I don't have it on the right angle. We've got it on another street now that should be way lower speed than that and if we continue to get a hundred and twenty and eighty-five, I know I still gotta change, so.
I think the number of, uh, did it say an eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-six? I think that's off too. I just did the math on that. If I did the math right, it's a hundred and five liters per hour on a twenty-four hour cycle.
And if you look at, if you look at, uh, I don't know.
That should be in here somewhere. It should be in a daily, a daily thing, uh, you just gave us this.
I have this one that's doing.
But this is, uh, this is eleven day, uh, cycle that's got.
The third through the, uh, what was, what was last Thursday, uh, I don't know the date, last Thursday.
Oh, I see.
The tenth, the third through the tenth, we just didn't have the machine and that's just, that's all the zeros on here. Or it was actually the eleventh, we put it up. So, on twelve eleven, at, uh, the first hour, it counted seventy cars closing and, uh, a hundred and ninety-five total in that one hour.
Yeah, I, I did the math wrong. I thought you put it up on a Thursday and took it down the following Monday, but there was a whole week.
No, we put it up last Thursday and pulled it yesterday morning.
Right, so it was more than just a few days, I thought.
So, within an hour, it showed the hundred and ninety-five count and what that could be is there's a pole in between the radar and the car and it passes the pole, it quits counting. Soon as it passes the pole, it counts that car's taken it down. So, there, there is gonna be a margin of error on these things. Uh, I think probably the more accurate count is, uh, the, uh, the closing, three thousand three hundred and forty-seven. You see, there's a almost, uh, two thousand difference between yet and going away. And I think we're getting a little bit of, uh, I think we're probably more around six thousand cars. I know I passed sixteen, I found them on the way here from history, I passed sixteen cars.
What would be interesting to me is the, uh, time of day you have the most traffic.
I've got all that.
You got all the time of day, you have the most feeders, which would be probably the time of day you got the most traffic, but.
This thing actually will break it down, it will tell you, uh, the times, it'll give me a single sheet paper that says this is the times you need to be out there enforcing traffic. You can punch fines into it, it'll, it'll tell you how much per day that we're, it said, in this time period, we could've made a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in five. So, I mean, it, it breaks everything down.
You wanted to pay rosemary.
But, uh, it's quite, I, we're still trying to figure out some of it and, uh, get some drivers, supposed to be able to change some of these settings with it and I don't have the drivers and they're not answering the call.
You do Avenue A, yeah.
I've, I've got it on one of our special streets right now, I'm gonna leave it there for seven days to get a more extended period and then Avenue A was gonna be there. So, I, I've got three that are, you know, people are always calling about and, uh, I'm gonna hit those three first and then I'm gonna circle back around after we do some traffic enforcement, I'm gonna have them down a little more. But I think thirty-three miles an hour, even when those high speeds is.
Pretty dang good.
Pretty good.
Yeah, they're not driving near as fast as what we're hearing.
Yeah, and hopefully I get it on the right angle when we get it back down there and get it figured out on these other streets, we'll have a little more accuracy and get it dialed in. I just wanna give y'all something to look at.
I like it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and Charlotte, you got anything for us?
Just wanna thank everyone for their help with the Christmas parade. Thank you all for participating, had a lot of very positive comments. Um, I think we wound up with seventy entries. Few days before the parade, I was a little disappointed, we'd lost twenty-five from the previous year, but before the parade, we had gained that plus, I think several showed up at the parade and said, we'd like to register to be in it, so we just said, just get in line. Sergeant Birch, I said, just put them in line wherever you can find a slot. But we did try a different lineup and I think Chief Richards feels that, that worked really well, it helped a lot of issues, so we'll try that. But thank you all for your participation and hopefully you can join us next year, Commissioner.
I hope so, I hope so. Best yet.
Yeah, thank you.
But in all.
It takes a lot of effort. A Mike, help line people up, Carla, her son.
You heard the police, uh, y'all had it going?
Well, we.
Very smoothly.
We have a lot of help.
All good, yeah.
People seem to look forward to it.
Yep, fun.
Thank you. Unless someone has some questions, that's all I have.
Okay, with citizens to be heard, if you'd mind, like, come forward. Come up, sir, and sign your name and, uh, say your name, sign your name. Karan.
Good morning.
Recognize you, get a little closer, I'm gonna have a glass.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, in all respect, places. My name is Karan Rouse. Uh, we have a sign that's being the overseer of the Code Cafe. Uh, we would like to try to put a sign on ninety-eight. Nothing to say that, uh, where we're located and that's one of the problems that we are running against right now. So, we're just trying to see what do we have to do to put a sign on ninety-eight, the same Code Cafe here that it's here.
We currently don't, uh, call off-premise signs, this is ordinance of the city that's, that's been around for a while, uh, and, uh, I'm not sure we have to study that a good bit, Karan, because once you do, everybody's gonna want their sign on ninety-eight and it's on somebody else's property. Uh, if you own the property out, that you wanna put a sign on, I'm not even sure that's allowable, Mr. Attorney. Do you recall that, that sign ordinance is long?
Jim? Yes, sir, no. Mr. Mr. Langston forwarded out and looked at it on there. Basically, I think it was back in two thousand fourteen, they, they amended the sign or to prohibit off-premise signs on there. So, basically, you can have a sign on your own property, but it's not allowable to have one anywhere off-site of the property, even if on the property on the other side of town they can't advertise, uh, Jim's car wash is on the other side.
But we do have, I mean, I think it stays there all the time, I don't think it's in and out, but it doesn't, Ronnie Bees have a sign on, on, uh, somebody else's property on ninety-eight.
Always has signs.
Yeah, yeah, so, so anyway, uh, that's something we can, it's obviously a color violation right there. We have allowed the, uh, flags and, and little sandwich signs put out that you have to take them back in, uh, every night, but, uh, but anyway, go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, I know this, it, it, the ordinance was, uh, adopted in two thousand fourteen, six years ago, um, when the board adopted it, you know, there was a lot of things that wasn't going on, as far as, um, Hurricane and things of that nature. And, uh, the businesses on Reed and, um, some, the business that we have on, in North of St. Joe, I don't think that, this is my personal opinion, I don't think that it's fair, uh, for a business just to be on ninety-eight, they own this property and, uh, they can advertise right here and, and the businesses that you can't see that's off ninety-eight, they can't put anything out there to let you know that their business is here. I don't, the North Side, Reed Avenue, Williams Avenue, you know, that's not fair, that's my opinion, but I also, in the ordinance, where you can have, um, I think, a permit, a, a permanent, you can have this permanent so that you can, um, I haven't read over real, I, I wanted to talk with Clint, but I, uh, about it, but I think you get a permit where you can put a sign, um, out that is established and is, um, in the ordinance, so I think that, um, we'll see where it is.
We had the same issues back in two thousand fourteen with the industrial park, the businesses that are in the industrial park, uh, and so, uh, they allowed, uh, St. Joe Company allowed a big sign on the highway and they could put their name up on the sign, uh, you know, they rent the space, I think, they just allow them, I think, is it like you said, six years ago? I don't remember the details, but I remember we went round and round and round and back forth and, and, uh, it, it was probably, I don't know how many meetings, uh, it was discussed before we had an ordinance in place. But I assume at that time, if I remember right, we were having a lot of trouble with that unsightly signs all over up-down ninety-eight and so I think that's what the impetus of ordinance was all about, but, but, you know, I'm often promoting our businesses, we need to, but once again, we do it for one, we're gonna do it for everybody and I don't know, I don't know a good way to do it, but I'm open, I'm open for a, a good way to do it.
I think we have one point, I don't know if the sign's still there, Hurricane Mac, we had a sign, I don't know if it was their sign or the city's sign or DOT's sign, but it directed you down there to the Marina. Marina had a restaurant.
Yeah.
Uh, and then the other thing that comes to mind is if you're traveling on one of the interstates, you know, you'll have like a DOT sign that'll say gas and it'll actually be the emblem of whatever.
Right.
Gas company, uh.
That's allowable. You can talk to DOT about that, they could put one of those blue signs that's right now is on the corner of First Street and, uh, ninety-eight, right around McDonald's and Business Districts, you know, at Marina, that type thing. I think you could get DOT to possibly put, put one there that might just say, business district or, or, I don't know, but it might be a way.
Well, I was meeting, uh, ordinance with, um, exactly, uh, sign committee, commit application, can you look at that for, uh, Clint?
Yes.
I said exactly what, what that, I, I just didn't understand the wording of, of it and how, um, how to push forward with it, but it does have in the ordinance, it is, um, six point, six point one permanent application and, um, they, they're basically saying a sign, permanent, it's gonna be twenty-five dollars.
Mr. Langston, what that is, is all the signs that are allowed in there, what happens if we have a whole board for City Hall? Let's say if you wanna put a sign on your building or if you wanna put a sign, you're talking about if you put it in front of the building, on the property, you can fill that out and show us where it's going on the property, where it's actually the building itself, we'll come out and take a look at it, then we'll issue the permit for those to be attached to the building or with the, my, the sign in front of that. It's not about the off-premise signs, but all of the ones that are off-premise, well, they have to fill out a sign application.
I, I would personally just start off probably, but like some of the other businesses, the, I guess the A-type frame signs, off-premise? I mean, we've got a number of businesses that got out, they're off-premise.
But they're actually on the stride way, I think, uh, which is, we, we kinda allowed it to look the other way, but you're supposed to take them in every night.
Every night, right.
And, uh, so, uh, that or, or work, we figure out how to do the DOT thing.
Right.
We bought a sign, six hundred and some dollars paid for it and, uh, you know, it's not benefiting us being in the garage right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Trying to do it the right way.
Yeah, you, I mean, you don't wanna get this man the right job, so.
No, sir.
So, uh, we, uh, work with Jim and, and the staff and maybe, you know, maybe we can, any of us, uh, we'll try to, try to help. We work with Jim and, and the staff and maybe, you know, maybe any of us, we'll try to, try to help you best we can.
That's one of the things running through right now.
I know.
They saying we don't even know you here.
Any business is off, I believe, when we was having it for fifty years almost and my dad always asked people, how did y'all find us over here? If they come in, because we didn't have any advertising on the highway, but, but yeah, I sympathize with you. We'll, we'll.
What I would suggest to you, like the same thing that Commissioner Lowery said, first thing I would do is I would say by getting one of those same signs, where we sit on those, we, we've allowed those to be put out there. So you could put one of those out close to ninety-eight out there off the sidewalk there and just take it down at night. You put it out there in the morning, you come in to work and when you leave, just take it down at the end. We said those, those are okay and those, those are big enough that I think you can see it disappears from the traffic.
Well, we actually have one right at the sun.
I thought you did.
Like I say, we spent a good little piece of money on a big sign, so you can see it on ninety-eight. We'll do, we have to try that one. Try that out.
We'll work with you. We sure will. Yeah. Thanks for coming. Anybody else? All right. I'm starting with Mr. Ashbrook.
Just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. Won't see anybody until next year. And hopefully, well, it can't be any worse than twenty twenty. Hopefully we have a better twenty twenty-one.
Absolutely. That's all I have. Merry. Same here. Echo that. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year and look forward to getting together with staff on Thursday, lunch.
Yep. That's right. Nice. I would just have to say Merry Christmas. We said, good times with the family and Happy New Year.
I'd also like to thank the city workers and especially Miss Charlotte for the Christmas parade. It's the most entries and the most group of people that I've seen in the three years that I've participated in it. I did hear a little bit of talk from the other end of the table that they had a float that was superior to my golf cart float. I didn't see it. So I'm, once again, I will declare myself the winner of the golf cart float. That's all I have. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody. I remind you, I'm going to see grandchildren in Tennessee on the twenty-third. I won't go to dinner, but I, you know, wish everybody well and thank you for the work you do and we'll, we'll, we're looking forward to a great year. Nothing else. We'll stand the term.